All right. Good evening, this is the April twenty sixth meeting, the work month, work meeting, it's our, it's our board meeting. Uh, so we are officially here at this time, um, we call an order and we'll start with the flag slip. This time, uh, I've been informed that, uh, Wanda is not going to be with us tonight, so she is excused. Uh, a roll call, Michael, President, Grant, Thomas?
Here.
Wonderful. Me, I'm here too. All right.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, so far, so good. Uh, no additions or deletions to our agenda tonight. And I believe we are now at our public comment. So we, two minutes?
Let's give it thirty seconds if there's anyone online to put their name and email in chat.
All right. Anyone in the room?
One of the
Nope, signed up, all right. All right, at this time, we will move on to our consent agenda. Um, at this time, I will ask, is there, have a motion to approve or director? All the consent agenda at the same time, all right, for all of our consent agenda?
So moved.
I'm second, I'm second, all right, and with that, um, you have a voice vote, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll take a voice vote at this time. All in favor?
I, I.
I approved, no extensions. Your names, move on. At this point, Tom, we're here to recognize Pamela Johnson, National Education Support Professional of the Year.
I want to invite Pam up. Um, as, uh, President Turner just said, Pam has been identified as the uh, twenty twenty-three Education Support Professional of the Year. And we are so proud. She is just a rock in our community. She is there for the kids nonstop. Um, the hours she commits to them is amazing. Every time I'm in the high school, I see Pam. And the work she does with the kids is, um, it's what all of our kids need, right? She believes in every single one of our kids, um, and believes in their abilities and believes that she's going to make a difference for them. And I'm just so glad that they realized what a gem she is and that she deserves to be recognized. And she's done lots of work in the district around equity. Um, we're all learning from her, not just our kids. And, um, she just, I, I can't say enough about her, and I hope she continues to stay in Rochester.
Oh, I will.
Okay, good. And we've got just a little something for you, but do you also have um, the opportunity to say a few things and introduce some of the guests that you have listening tonight?
Um, first of all, thank you, but before I get started, I would like to introduce my guest. Um, Michelle Faye, most of you guys know. Um, Kathy Axel from the WA Shunner. Um, Dr. Erica Hernandez Scott, who's the intern executive director at the professional uh, Educator Standards Board. And then Lisa Pressnell, who is our parent educator, um, who I also want to say, she replaced Jack. Yeah. Okay. So I just, um, I did really want to thank, um, Rochester School District for allowing me to be me. Um, in this small community, I remember when I was first hired eleven years ago. I was trying to find my way. I didn't know if I wanted to be a teacher or still, um, or be a parent educator. And then I knew then when I first was hired at, um, the primary school that I wanted to be, um, parent educator, that I felt my role in helping the, um, classroom teacher was a way I can help make sure that those relationships with the student and, um, sophisticated, um, can kind of blend together. Um, fast forward to today, um, I'm just honored to be working in a small, um, community like this. Um, Rochester has really opened up their doors for me and given me the opportunity to do what I need to do. And having open door policies with everyone here, including from the superintendent all the way down. Um, being able to just pick up the phone or email Laura or Destin or even Jennifer or just anyone and having that relationship, that's, that's very intentional for me because of the fact that it takes all of us to do what we need to do. I, um, I stemmed that on a village um, concept in my culture, it takes all of us to, um, to the village, and it's important that we're able to do that. So, um, thank you. But I share this with everyone in here as well. Um, and so I thank you.
Thank you. Pam, you were recognized at a very big ceremony in Seattle. And gave an amazing speech, um, after you were recognized. How many people were in the room?
Uh, question, twelve hundred.
Yes, from across the country. Um, so last year, she was the state, um, Education Support Professional of the Year. And so this year, all of the other states, the people from our other states were there in Seattle. And, um, Pam didn't know going into the evening that she was going to be selected.
No clue.
We do know, we do. No, no, we all know, we just know.
Well, you need to find out at the end what happened, it's like our state president knew for a month. He was like, oh yeah, now I can let go of this secret. I was talking to you and you were someone, pick up the phone and you asked me something, it's like secret. But I'm just, I'm just overwhelmed, but I also know the hard work that, um, I need to continue to do to make sure the parent educators, and that includes all nine classifications that we have from the secretary, the custodian, the bus driver are, um, at the forefront because we, we are the mark we are the foundation of schoolwork, and you guys know that. Um, and the teachers know that, and the counselors know that, everyone knows that, and I want to make sure that it's out there, yeah, and so, and that we're recognized for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have a cigarette, real quick, is there, I'm sorry. No, you go right ahead, ask questions. Do you feel, is there more responsibility that comes with this during the year?
Yeah, so I will be traveling, so hopefully on the, like, I think on a Thursday, come back on Monday. Um, I've already done three states via video, um, and spoke at our WEA, um, rep assemblies, and so I'm looking forward to that. And I will be speaking at our national, um, rep assembly with close to eight thousand people, so.
Wow.
That could be interesting. But I know I can do it, so, um. So just being able to put myself in those different places and making sure that, um, I always be highly registered wherever I go. And people have always asked me, well, how come you, why don't you just come to a bigger school district than you don't understand? You know, I'm here because the challenges and things that they need often are not spoken to at the table, and I want to make sure that I'm sitting at the table. And I'm very fortunate to be working with, um, Dr. Erica Scott and Lisa, when I'm on a parent education board, we're, we're talking about those things statewide and even, um, nationally. So it's important that we, yeah, there's representation there, definitely.
I just want to say one thing, Pam. When, when we all meet together for our RA, um, we meet in different caucuses, and there's a small rural caucus that meets. And Pam has been known to, uh, speak of the benefits of Rochester in, in, in that caucus. And so this time she was busy doing some other things, and so she wasn't there right at the beginning. And so, um, somebody said something about budget cuts or whatever it was, and there was a, there was a gentleman sitting next to me, he goes, where's Pam Johnson? So anybody taking money from Rochester, she's gonna like make up big she's busy doing something else, but I'm from Rochester, and he goes, did she send you here? So I just wanted, I don't think we realized how great an ambassador Pam is for all the educators here, and she is, I mean, I couldn't be more proud of her because I felt like I, I started her off on this journey of being a union person, and then she became the ESP of the year for NEA, which is like astonishing to me, but so well deserved. And I just, I, I hope you understand how big a deal she really is. This was a huge, huge competition she was up against. I mean, I don't know how many thousands of ESPs were in the running from state stuff to low to, to the actual end here, but she's so deserving, and I just, I just want to say that out loud.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Question? No, I, I don't have any questions, but I think we, there should be, uh, because you still, you work at the high school, right?
Oh, yeah.
Every time I come over to high school, you're standing there. So we'll take that picture somewhere and put it up.
We've got a big poster on the wall over here and up, yeah.
Is it in?
Yep. So, yes.
Sorry, you, you know where I'm going with it.
Yes.
Okay. So, um.
But I do think we should get a picture with Pam and at least Neil, if not the rest of the board too.
Yes.
I want to take a picture.
Use your pictures as a background. There you go.
Where do you want it?
Let's put it right against us, Mr. Drop.
Pam, what's the students' reaction bit?
I would address for appropriately, they know what I
You know what you got.
Oh, you
I thought when we're sitting at the table tonight.
Really? You're a lead national educator.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Why just stand? Smile, Pam. The constant smile on your face.
Oh, oh. It's gonna be shot, I hear.
All right, Tim, can I get you to join then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be.
We all made?
You're good, yes.
Okay.
Oh, great picture.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Pam, congratulations. Thanks for coming tonight.
Stay as long as you want.
But that also means
Done now.
We know it's sunny outside. You senior baskets for my track. I fully understand, I know you have a lot on your plate, so, like I said, stay as long as you'd like, but we understand if you're living out to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, for all you've done for our district and the recognition you brought to our community. Thank you so, so much. All right, and moving forward, we have student reports.
Alrighty, well, things are going as usual in Rochester, and by as usual, I mean great. Uh, the robotics team, you, we probably all heard the unfortunate news where the robot gained sentience and crawled away, but but the robotics team is coming together and they are working hard. I see them in class almost all the time. It is absurd. Uh, Mason, I know the kid, he wanted to be a NASA scientist and, or NASA engineer, uh, that sounds smarter. He definitely has the, uh, gut sewn, I think that's the right term, uh, to become a NASA engineer. Uh, springflingflung, it went great. Uh, we have a play, uh, Goldie, the Untold Story, uh, it's happening on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. I think the most expensive ticket is ten dollars, so just bring that and you'll be okay. It's at Rochester High School. Yeah.
Where they did Alien, that too?
Yeah, they did Alien, which was pretty awesome. The robotics team made like a robot that drove around, so.
Oh, I was there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, also Alien's a great movie, but besides that, about Rochester, uh, we have a quartet in our band that's competing at state, Dr. Bethman, uh, she was there directing, orchestrating. Yeah, she was working with them, which I really appreciate, and, uh, us just, uh, higher up person at our school, interacting with the students and people there. Um, yeah, we had a pep assembly last week on Friday, and it went great. We had teachers and students doing a synchronized dance, uh, which went fantastic. It was for TikTok, which I'm not a big TikTok fan, but it was, it was amazing. They had skill and some teachers like Mr. Holgivist, I didn't know he could move like that. So, yeah, we learned a lot. Um, but yeah. It's a great time here at Rochester.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Was the, um, was the track team recognized at the, uh, uh, whatever that thing you were called?
The pep assembly?
Yes.
I, I don't think they were, they didn't really, uh, talk about teams, but on the morning announcements, there were two days where there was a huge list of people. Um, and I'm not a sports guy, so I had the, yes, like four by two hundred, uh, track, yeah, so that was tough for me, but they did get there, they got their recognition, that's, I think, that mattered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, awesome. Any other questions? Right, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Justin. And next we will move on to our special education reports.
And Laura's here tonight, she's gonna give us an update and share information with us about a special education program.
All right, so as you know, I'm super, we're passionate about this, so if you see, like, Justin picked me or something, that means I need to quit talking, so I will, I will try and keep it brief, because you know I can talk about this for a long time. So, um, first of all, I just want to go through a couple numbers with you, so you can go to the next one. Um, this is some information about, uh, what our district looks like in regards to special education numbers. So you see, the top one is REIP, that's our, um, Early Intervention Preschool Program, and that is only for students with IEPs. So you can see we have thirty-one students and a hundred percent of those students have IEPs. Um, then you look at, uh, you go through each building and it shows the number of students in the building, number of students with IEPs, and the percentage of students with IEPs in the building. So one thing that I do want to make sure that, that you're aware of, uh, RPS also has, there's, um, some students in, um, transitional kindergarten. Our general ed students in transitional kindergarten are counted in that RPS number. Our special ed students in transitional kindergarten are counted in the REIP numbers. Not a huge, not a huge deal, but just so you're aware that because of the funding, they're counted in different categories. But as you can see where we fall for students with IEPs across the district. Um, where the, let's just pass the bill where we're going to get funded up to fifteen percent. And when we go to the next slide, it'll show where we are over time, um, as a district with our percentage of students with IEPs overall. We have been improving in the last number of years. Um, we're right now right below that fifteen percent, which is a, a good place to be. Um, prior to this, it was thirteen point five percent, we've never seen that, that we were funded for, but we've never made it to that level. Um, I will say, uh, we're gonna serve the students that should be served in special education, we're not gonna say we're closed after thirteen point five percent. Um, but it's, we want to make sure we're serving the right students and being fiscally responsible, so that number, that percentage going down a little bit is, is important and we want to do that. However, I will say right now, um, that number may go up a bit because, uh, the impact that COVID has had, COVID's not a disability, but it has definitely had an impact on our students, and we may see numbers go up a little bit. Any question on the numbers before I go on to some other things?
Laura got lost a little bit, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
These percentages, are the percentages by P's, the funding, the funding percentage is what?
They are the percentage of students with IEPs in the district. So Justin, if you could go back one slide, shows in each building, it shows the number of students that are in each building in that first column there. The second column is the number of students with IEPs in each building. And that third column is the percentage of students with IEPs in each of those settings. So you can see like RPS is sixteen percent, sixteen percent of the student body at RPS has IEPs. Whereas at Grand Mound, it's only eleven percent.
And then is the next slide, then the funding, is that the?
So this slide shows over the years from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen on the bottom, or overall as a district, we are at almost seventeen percent students with IEP. And now in twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at about fifteen percent students with IEPs.
You, you mentioned something about legislature funding, about fifteen percent now?
Yes.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Beginning next year.
Beginning next year.
Okay.
Um, our, our funding will go up slightly. Um, I'm going to bang the drum that it's not fully funding special education in any way, shape, or form. I know that's not news to any of you, but, uh, I will continue to, um, advocate for, um, fully funding special education. We're not there yet, but we'll take a victory. We'll take, we'll take some additional funding. Direction, absolutely.
I'm probably the only one in the room who doesn't know this, but what is an IEP?
An IEP, that's a good question. IEP is an individualized education plan. So a student that's in special education has an IEP, um, which is the, the plan that helps set up their program to help them be successful.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions on numbers before we go on to some of our programs?
Uh, question, so the fifteen percent, that's what just the legislature did like last week, or Governor finally signed off on it? Yeah, one victory this year.
So there was, a- and it was, there was some talk about funding to whatever percentage a district had, and that didn't happen. So, but we'll take the fifteen percent. And right now that works perfectly for us, you know, but it'll ebb and flow, and sometimes it might not cover all the student needs. Okay, okay. Any other questions about numbers before we go into programs? Ashton, questions? No?
You're doing great.
All right, okay, thank you. Thumbs down if I'm like, if, if I need to change something, okay?
I'll throw something in.
Throw something, okay, that'd be perfect. Okay, so, um, in our, in our district and legally for special education, we're required to provide what's called the continuum of services. And what that means is students should, based on what their needs are and based on what their IEP says, they should have the option of programs in this continuum from fully in a general ed classroom with the supports that they need through, uh, a special ed teacher, working with a general ed teacher to provide some specially designed instruction, to within our district, fully in a self-contained program. Really, the only, actually not even there anymore. The only fully self-contained program we have is our preschool. But now with transitional kindergarten, most of our kids in the preschool spend a little time with the other preschool kiddos. Our other buildings have what's called self-contained programs, but we're really purposeful to get our kiddos into, in with their peers in PE or lunch or you know, entry task of the day or whenever it's appropriate. So that is our continuum within the district. Um, I'm not going to go very far down this road, but I just want you to be aware that outside of the district, there can be more restrictive environments. We have students that's in what's called Olympic Academy, which is a program in Chehalis for students whose behavior needs are such that we don't have the capacity within the dis- district to provide their appropriate program, so we contract with the ESD first. So that, that's a more restrictive program that I don't have here because it's not within our district. So when we look at this, we have self-contained as most restrictive, moving to general education. And at the high school level, students are in, uh, New Market or Running Start, so that's kind of the continuum, and we have students everywhere in between. What questions do you have on that?
How many kids do we have from the district, uh, at the New Market and Running Starts that are?
Um, I think we have, the last I looked, we had nine at New Market. Running Start, I don't have a number, but I'm gonna guess not very many. Yeah.
And you said we have some kids in district that are going to Chehalis?
They are not going to Chehalis School District, but the program is, is based in, in Chehalis. So it's, it's through ESD one thirteen, and it's, um, it's called Olympic Academy, it's a program for, it's kind of a day school program for students with significant behavior concerns.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I got a question, but I'm not sure if it falls within this, I'm asking anyway, so if, um, say you, you get a student who starts in, uh, in kindergarten and primary, and then how do you, and does not have an IEP, doesn't fall within that realm, but all of a sudden they get to the second, third grade or, or wherever in there. Uh, how, what is to say that person needs to be tested and then fall into that category? Does that happen?
That's a really good question, actually, it's a really good question, because that's, that's the challenge that we deal with a, a lot in the district is we have a student that's struggling and what do we do to help them? Because I mean, as a district, that's our goal, we want to help students that are struggling. So when we think about that, there's the legal requirement around what we do for a student with a suspected disability.
No.
There is a legal.
Oh, legal, okay, okay.
So if a student has a suspected disability and we think that there's an educational impact, sorry about the jargon, but that's how the law goes, and there's a need for specially designed instruction, then we would do a referral to special education. And then the team would determine whether or not to evaluate, and then if they determined to evaluate, they would evaluate, and the student would either qualify or not qualify. But what we really try to do is if there's not a clear disability, I mean, it's not a clear suspected disability, and it doesn't, we're not sure if they would need specially designed instruction, we really try to go through an intervention program for our students. Because there could be different reasons besides the disability that students might be struggling. This is where COVID's coming in a lot right now, especially with our littles who have had no opportunity for communication or social interaction. And what might look like a disability is actually lack of exposure. So we try to go through interventions, academic, social, those types of things. See how those interventions are doing, collect lots of data, and then determine if those interventions are helping the students make progress. And if over time those interventions are not helping the student make progress, then we might look at, um, referring a student for an evaluation. So thank you for asking the question, because that's, that's a good question to ask. And one of the things before we go on, um, on this is, as a district, as a state, uh, we are working to have our students be included in general education as much as, as is appropriate. And the reason for that is because our general ed education classes and our general education teachers know the standards the very best. They know how to teach to the standards, they know how to give the students the tools they need to be successful in life. So we would really want to work to have our students have access to general education as much as possible. Doing that isn't just saying, okay, Justin, there you go, go on into class, and, um, Ashton, you're gonna teach him. And Ashton may not know how to meet Justin's needs, so it needs to be a collaborative effort with the special education teacher who knows how to meet students' needs. Ashton is a general education teacher who knows the standards the best to work together to provide the appropriate program for Justin. So when you look at that continuum, sometimes students are in that general education side. And sometimes it needs some extra support, or sometimes that might not be appropriate, so they might be in a resource room or self-contained. But we are working as a system to move to more of our students being in a inclusive general education environment. One of the things I try to, one of my pet peeve phrases that I probably still use from time to time is we're gonna have students with IEPs push into general ed. Makes it sound like that's not where they belong. And we want to make sure all of our students feel like they belong in the classroom. And provide extra support around that. So.
Makes sense to me, I mean.
Um, we're going to, what I, one of the things, oh, can you go back real quick, Justin? I'm sorry, you were right on, because you got my vibe to change it, but I'm going back a second. So, um, I'm gonna share a little bit about a couple site visits we've gone to, because we're going to some type sites around Western Washington to look at how schools are providing better inclusionary practices for kids. And, but I also want to speak to some of the things we're doing. So at the primary level, which is under elementary here, we're really working, we've kind of adjusted our special education teachers to have one of the teachers who's working very specifically with the general ed teachers. His schedule is set up, so he has part of his day every day going into general ed classes, working with the teachers. He goes in sometimes when the students are in there, and really working to make sure it's a collaborative program. And we are trying to build that more and more across our district, help our special education teachers feel like coaches and leaders to support what we're doing in special education for our students in the general education classroom. So that's something, that's one of the things we're doing, but another thing that we're doing is that co-teaching model in secondary. And last year we did a presentation about some of the co-teaching we're doing, and I wanted to show you a super short snippet of a video of teachers that were co-teaching that gives you a little bit of the, what is challenging and what worked well, and this is sixty seconds, so you're not gonna get the whole story. But now you, you could go on to the next slide in the really short videos. Yeah, I guess. Wait, no, wait, no, I'm just kidding.
Few things that we found that has helped make this journey successful for us and for the classroom. First thing being is just being flexible with each other, being flexible with the students. Having a growth mindset and establishing a good working relationship with your partner.
Yeah, totally. And I think along with that is looking at, we have a really diverse population of students in our co-taught class. We have students who are um, have learning disabilities, hearing impairments. We have students who are identified as having behavior plans um, and students who are identified as EL. And so we have experienced having a tough time reaching all those students sometimes, but with being able to work together um, towards a common goal of all of our students being able to access the general education and our essential standards that we have established as a district, we've been able to work together to do that.
Mm-hmm. So wha- what I want you to hear in that and of course, is that it's not easy and you kind of wrestle with making sure you're providing what all students need. Not just students with IEPs, but you know, students that might have English as their second language or students that might have had a bad morning. You know, or whatever it might be, working and really wrestling through and trying to do the right thing for kids. And that's what, that's what we're really trying to do as a district. And the, you know, I, I'd like to pretend and say it is perfect. If you walk into any classroom with any student with an IEP, it is going to be like ah, but it's not, you know, we, we have the reality, but we have teachers who are going to continue to wrestle and do the right thing. Any questions on that before I go on? Okay, let's go on to the next slide, please.
Few things that we.
So this is what I want to share a little bit about the sites we've had the opportunity to visit. And um, you think, okay, so we're going to go visit some sites. Maybe some of them will be close. None of them are close. Um, we have to drive through Seattle for almost all of the site visits. So we get up really early and drive up north. Uh, but what I want to share about each of these sites that we are trying to take into what we're doing as a district is they each had something that I felt like was what made them stand out. So when we looked at the Edwin Pratt Early Learning Center, so it's in um, uh, guidelines. And in that, this was a early learning center that students from around the district came into. There was, there were different early learning programs with this different funding sources. But their belief system was every student should be in the classroom with other students. It wasn't like, well, you know, you too could be in the classroom, but you too need to be over there. All the students are there and they're learning how to socialize and work together and be ready to be kindergarteners together, whether they had a disability or didn't have a disability. It was that belief system, you know, and we're doing a book study in ad council and one of the lines in the book is if you don't think your students will be able to succeed, you're right. And so pairing that belief system that all students can learn and all students can grow is what I really thought was powerful about that early learning center. And as we think about what we're doing um, with our transitional kindergarten. See where that goes, but.
Going.
And our um, early learning program, how they're working together. So all of the students have access to learning with their peers. Then the elementary school, Mc-Micken Elementary School. We, when we walked through the classrooms in that building, you, you couldn't tell who had an IEP, who didn't have an IEP. I mean, they don't wear blue hats. You know, if they have a behavior plan or anything like that, you, but you, you couldn't tell even from behavior. But what was really cool about that is how clear they were about their explanation of if you, if a student has really significant needs, we want them in general ed and here are the expectations for that student. Might look a little different for the next student, might look a little different for the next student. You know, Shana might be participating in almost everything, whereas Laura may only be able to be there just for social interaction. It's really clear about what students were doing in that environment. And then the, the middle school, Hidden River Middle, Middle School in Monroe. They did the co-planning and co-teaching like we talked about, but they did it with almost every student in the middle school. And so uh, students who can be five, six le- grade levels behind, you have special ed and general ed teachers working together to plan the programs. So it was really cool to see and we are going in that direction, but I'm, I will say, I'm not the kind of person who's like all in, everybody's going to be in general ed all the time, the end, because that might not be right for everybody. We're going to determine programs based on student needs. But we're going to continue to fight for the best programs. Any questions? We're going to go visit one more elementary school here in a couple of weeks. Um, so I'll share that with you when I return. Any other questions on?
I don't see, may I misunderstanding, but I don't see a high school up there.
Well, we had a high school visit scheduled and they canceled it. The high schools are really hard to get into. And I first reached out to, it's the Inclusionary Practice Project through the University of Washington. Um, and I first reached out to them late fall, early winter, and there hasn't been a day school visit available. I'm going to keep trying. We will try and get into one. We had a planned visit to Bellingham and they canceled with the, at last minute. So I'm going to keep trying with the high school.
How is discipline um, taken if a uh, a child is picking on somebody with special needs? In those, that specific setting where you have them all in the same classroom and say it continues to to, to, you know, whatever, it, it just continues. How, how do we, how do we fix that and keep that child in in that classroom? I'm curious is like, how does that?
Good question. And I will tell you, behavior is the most challenging part when students are struggling with their behavior. That's the most challenging part because of the impact it has on so many students around them. If you have a student who's picking on another student that has a disability, that's a big deal and there will be some significant consequences for that because that's you, you don't pick on kids with disabilities and, and it's, it's, yeah. So that is, that is a huge deal and it is addressed and it is addressed well across our buildings. Where there is conversation, there are consequences, there's restorative justice, all of those things when we're working with that. Um, I'm going to give you an example at the primary school, um, where we had two kiddos in the same class and one of them was picking on the other one and the other one had autism and this one was picking on this one and and it was happening and it was worked on and, and um, Amy was intervening in that uh, situation. And it ended up this, a student that was picking on the other student was moved to another class because this student needed to have the opportunity to be successful. And, and, but this was what, I mean, lots of conversation with both sets, parents and all of that. So it wasn't like you're out, that would try to work through it, but for the student to be able to be successful, they needed to have a safe environment. Other questions?
Um. I'm just trying, I'm, I'm thinking about it and I'm, I was trying to figure out the best way to say this. So uh, working with inclusionary practices and trying to get uh, the special needs kids involved, the general population of kids in class. Is there um, particular um, classes that this applies to more than others? Like an elective type base or where's, you know, it's like kind of put somebody in uh, English, that's seventh grade English, but the, but the special needs child with the IEP. They're pretty much at like a fifth grade level. So are we trying to in integrate these kids that are at a lower setting than these other kids that are there or does this work better for the other kids that are in seventh grade at that level that they're able to work in, in?
That's another really good question. So oftentimes for students with more significant needs, we'll start with electives or we'll start with PE or music or some of those classes um, where the reading, if there's not as much reading or things like that, or things that students are more um, students are more able to access. Um, I'm like, for example, uh, they um, uh, Ms. Fagan at the high school will have students with some pretty significant needs in her, in her class and doing pottery and things like that because that, that's something that they can be accessible with. That's kind of a starting point. Um, but then yes, we do move to more of those four classes. Um, science and social studies are not areas of eligibility for special education. So we have most of our students across the district that are in general ed, science and social studies classes. Um, we have a um, one co-taught science class at the high school. Um, but most of the classes are, the students are in that class a- as a general ed, i- in a general ed class. Sometimes there's EA support. Um, we have our special ed teachers working with our general ed teachers to modify the curriculum. Uh, we're trying to stick, we want to stick with those sta- same standards, but modify the amount of work they need to do or the level of complexity of the text or things like that. So students can access. Um, there might be production lab where the students can go in and get some extra help on how to do those activities. Might be an EA that comes and supports them. Lots of different ways. CSR, the high school. Um, a couple of our special ed teachers' kids will come into the CSR class and get extra help. And then the next level is language arts and math. Most of our students that qualify in those areas in the high school are in resource classes. And we're working on kind of changing that trajectory because what, from fifth grade, fifth grade and below, they're in gen ed for those classes. And then at a middle school, some of them are in co-taught, some of them are in general ed. And then as they get a little older, that changes. So we're really trying to make sure students with the supports they need can be in general ed more of it.
Uh, one more question. Do we need to hire more uh, EAs, uh, assistants to help work with this co-mingling and bringing the kids all together?
Um, sometimes I would say yes, but sometimes I would say no because we want to make sure our students learn how to be independent. And one of the things that can happen when we have too many EAs is our kiddos become too dependent on, on the staff they work with. Sometimes it's very appropriate and some of our kiddos need it. Sometimes it's, it's not. So it really depends on the situation. Could we use more EAs? Of course, yes, absolutely. But is that something that I feel like would be fiscally responsible right now? Probably not.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anybody else have any more questions?
I have just a little bit more. These are just, um, this is something I like, I try to share with you every year. Um, club and sport participation for students with IEPs. So as we talked about, we're about fifteen percent of our students across the district have IEPs. And this shows the club and sport participation for students with IEPs at the middle school and high school. So the high school is doing a bit of a better job having students with IEPs and clubs and sports. I don't have it broken down for every club and sport. Just overall, um, sixty-three of the six hundred eighty students that we have in our list that are in clubs and sports have IEPs. So about a little over nine percent at the high school and um, almost six percent at the middle school. We still have the little flyers we try to pass out at IEPs that say, here are all our clubs and sports available. You know, you, and, but sometimes it's you know, we, we continue to try and have our students with IEPs participate. We'd like to get that percentage up. But that's something I like to share with you every year to hold, hold me accountable to it too.
Or do we have the, make sure I say this right, the um, this is great. I let you know, I love this. Fun stuff. The um, percentage of kids with IEPs that are a part of a club, does that make sense? So that's not what that says, right?
Yes, that's the percentage of students that are in any club or sport from that list. I have it broken down like for like for boys soccer, I have the number of students with IEPs versus the total number. But this is just overall, like at the high school, six hundred eighty students are in one of those clubs or sports under RHS.
Right.
And sixty-three of them have IEPs. So about nine percent of the students in clubs and sports have an IEP.
I think my question is, how many kids have IEPs in the high school? And of that number, how many are involved in something extracurricular?
So number of kids with IEPs at the high school is ninety-one.
Ninety-one, just fading sixty-three.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Seventy percent.
Yeah, oh, so that's, that, yeah.
I would put that on that spot in the future, in addition to what you have on there. I think that.
That's a good idea. That would be, that's a good thing to have.
Yeah.
Is it six eighty or is it five fifty-five? For the high school?
So six to eighty is just, well, that's a good question. So what I'm going to guess is from that number is that students are on there more than once. So it might not.
Double up. Some kids play three sports, some kids.
So I can break it down that way because that sixty-three number may be a little, it might be some of the kids were in cross-country cheer and football.
Okay.
But of the, of of six hundred eighty students, shouldn't it still be the five, still five fifty-five?
Yeah, so total five fifty-five, six hundred.
You should have a better percentage.
Yes, yes. I like that.
Look even better.
So I will play with that.
Hmm.
And then the last thing is Day of Champions. And I have a flyer for you, but it's in my office, so I'm going to run and get it when we're done here. Um, Day of Champions, if you have not ever participated, had the opportunity to go is an awesome event where students with uh, disabilities get to participate in like athletic activities. Discos, long jump, obstacle course, parachute, lots of different things. Um, the kiddo in the middle on the top is now a sixth grader. And the two kiddos on the bottom have uh, graduated. These are all the pictures of our students from past Day of Champions. And um, in the middle, the teacher there is still at the high school. It's um, Mr. Current. So uh, this is a very cool event. Um, if you have the opportunity to come, I'm going to give you the flyer that gives the information. It's going to be in Yale, at Yale High School on June first. Super cool bucket filling opportunity. So I just wanted to throw that in at the end.
Tell your story about the young man with the T-shirt.
Okay, so it's actually the young man on the left in that bottom picture. Um, he has some pretty significant disabilities and he um, he's non-verbal and he sometimes, you know, he really struggled to communicate because he's non-verbal and it was challenging for him to communicate. But something he loved in his life was his Day of Champion. And he, I'm sure he still loves, but he's not here anymore, is his Day of Champion T-shirts. So every day, all the time, he would wear a different Day of Champion T-shirts. And he went lots of years in a row. And you could talk to him in January like, hey, you're wearing your Day of Champion T-shirt. Huge grin. He'd be excited every time. So that experience, that Day of Champions, once a year for this kiddo impacted him all year long because it was such a cool experience for him. So, and that's, it's the case for many of our students that go. And you can, I mean, see the smiles on their faces. It's, it's really awesome and it's their chance to shine in a way that sometimes can be challenging when they, when they're in maybe a regular P. All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to go get those papers and I'll just kind of hand them to, back to you. Thank you so much. If more questions come up, you know how to find me.
What is your name?
Uh, Laura Saly.
Laura Saly. Right. Hmm. Where's Jill?
Um, I'm glad you asked.
Thank you.
I just, I, I look at the next thing, says business report. I'm like, where's Jill at? I've never not seen her today.
Yes, Jill has been sick for a few days and so she's not here to do the business report. And the business report, she actually had to leave right in the middle of finishing the business report. So it's not attached this week. It will be attached as soon as she gets back to the office. So it'll be there for the record and you can review it when, when you have time.
Yeah, if, hey, if kids can do schoolwork at home, you can do work at home. Uh, there's no sympathy.
I'm taking care of her, she's.
No Zoom while you're barking. That just wouldn't be good. All right. So we're going to go past our business report and we will get copies that sent to us next week.
And it'll just be uh, linked in the, in the meeting presentation there. Yep. I, I'll let you know when it's there so that you can review it if you'd like. There isn't any um, significant changes in the reports. It's.
In her report?
In her report, yeah. It's pretty much what we're, what we've been seeing.
All right.
I think we're actually up just a little bit in our student IP, like two kids.
Cool. That's usually the one I want to know about the most. How many kids do we have in right now?
A lot of them.
Okay, well, with that, I guess we'll move on to our superintendent report.
Right. So I have just a few things to show you to the, today. First of all, starting with some pictures of kids. And here we have um, quite a few, three pictures of the athletes. And the top two on the left-hand side, that's from the big meet on Saturday. And Justin was there. Maybe Justin, he wants to talk about it, but it just sounds like a great event and.
Yeah, the uh, Activator Classic, which is uh, held, uh, actually, they've now changed it. Activator Invitational's held on Friday. Uh, which goes for about six hours. Uh, the Activator Classic, which is now held on Saturday. And so uh, the Saturday event, all, all students from thirty-two teams this year. Uh, as far as north as British Columbia, as far south as, I want to say Vancouver area. Uh, came and attended. And our girls four by two uh, team actually set, set their own season record that day and finished second uh, to London uh, in, in.
Right here, Kalen Black.
Yes.
Yeah, Kal- Kalen and uh, Jill's daughter also, Kenna is on, is on that team as, as well. So uh, keep it in the office. It's, it's a fun, it's a fun, it's a fun meet. And if you haven't been, it, as, as a parent, um, it is a long meet.
Where is it at?
It's in, it's at WF less than Chicago. Yeah, in past, in past years, that, that meet on Friday night is typically gone till almost midnight.
Hmm.
This year they had seventeen heats of Boys One Hundred um, on Friday night. And I'm glad I didn't. Um on Friday night, and I'm glad I didn't attend the Friday night one. I got to attend the Saturday one this year, so.
It is really cool.
It is, it is really cool. It's really cool to see all these, all these kiddos and just, they're just. They do a great job at that meet, so it's fun to go to.
The girls had a couple of winners in the classic.
Yes, and we did have.
Won the uh, what, the hundred meter hurdles and uh, and uh. Weddell won the.
This Weddell wins the shot put most weeks.
So some good celebrations there. We also had. Uh the boys' baseball team, that was a picture when they were playing at uh Rainier. Fields, is it Rainier? It's not Rainier. Where the Rainiers play. Um and they beat, I believe that was against the Ninos. Um so they won that one. And then the top right-hand picture is uh. Uh the migrant, um our family migrant program hosted a dinner for families. And we actually are working this year with um. Uh a nurse, um Cecilia, who actually used to be in our district last year. And now she's um taking on the, the position of migrant nurse. And so she came and helped support the program and they talked about healthy programs and healthy um. Activities that families can engage in. Um it was a. Things about staying healthy as, as families and. It was um a really, a very nice evening. It wasn't attended by a lot of people, but it's a good start. To a program of supporting families in our community. Then. Um just last Friday. We had the Meister Family Tree Farms, um provided over a thousand trees for our students in. Uh at. The primary school and at Grand Mount. And each student walked away with a tree. They're kind of small, so it's a little hard to see in those pictures, but like the young lady is handy. It's a seedling, and so the young lady has it up in the air. Um you can see the bottom right-hand picture is actually, actually of a young man who took it home and planted the tree and then brought back a picture for us to see. But the kids were very excited about getting them. I wasn't there, but Shauna was there. Shauna, you wanna? Share a little bit about that event?
I was, I, I just helped to get them there. So actually, Mr. Doll. And met with Mr. Meister outside and we transferred the trees and then went and delivered them to each school. Mid-morning, um you know, it's great there um. It, it's really exciting for them. To see, you know, something that they do every day, day in and day out, to go to the kids in hopes of. You know, um fostering and growing people, replanting. The things that we take out of our environment, and so it was really cool. And um. Already plans for next year, so um and then of course the schools each organize how the kids get them and it's really fun to see the photos. And the excitement on the kids' face and. It's really, it's a really neat thing.
This took place on Earth Day, correct?
The day before, so Saturday, Earth Day is on a Saturday, and so they were handed out on Friday and then Saturday was Earth Day.
So this was the second year of the event and as Shauna said, we're hoping to continue it on into the future. Next, we have the Skills USA team and um Ashton shared information about that and the celebration that's. You know, everybody is celebrating these, our students and rightfully so. This is the fifth year in a row that we had students that placed first. At the state level and have had um students go to nationals. In the robotic search, search and rescue uh. Division. So uh that's really, that is unheard of. This is a huge competition, um statewide. Students from across the state and it. You know, they don't compete against like-sized schools. This is all of the schools together. You're in the robotics competition. You compete with students from the largest high schools up north. Or Spokane schools, whoever is in that league or in that division is um. In that, I should say, event. Um competes against each other. So for, for Rochester to have taken first place for five years in a row is something really to celebrate. The drone competition, this is the first year of the drone competition. And Rochester took first in that one as well. Um in the robotic search and rescue, I'm gonna go back there real quick. We not only took first this year, but we took first, second and third. And our stu- students are not seniors. They are.
They're all sophomores and juniors, all three teams, and then a couple of freshmen.
So young students and the kids take their drones. They use the same drone year after year. So they continue to improve it and they continue to work on their. Um the, the journal, the notebook that they put together, that continues to be a product that they continue to work on. And so every year when they go back, they get to take what they learned the previous year. And apply it and um benefit from that work that they've done previously. So, go ahead.
We sit in the um. Uh the, the teacher's the. Class because he teaches advanced uh.
Physics.
Physics.
Yep.
Physics. I was thinking calculus, but physics. Yeah, 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 yeah. I remember sitting in there.
So real celebrations going on. Uh these kids are working hard and. Um I learned a lot about the work that they're doing when um Drew Mickelson was out there and spent. He spent over two hours with the kids, talking to him when he put together the, the uh. Uh the news piece for um King Five. Did a great job talking to the kids and. Um you know, really just, he wanted them to work and he. You know, learned about what they were doing, so it was great. Nationals are in June. Nineteenth through the twenty-third, they're in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh a little bit about the theft, so um I think you, if you have any questions, we can answer questions. But there is an insurance claim that's being made. Justin, do we have a total on the amounts of the?
Equipment. Equipment's about ten-five.
Ten thousand five hundred. And our truck. Um do you wanna give just a little bit and?
If they pulled our truck, it's in the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar range. Um the physical damage isn't. That much, but it's what they did internally to the. The motor. They, they rode that, they drove that truck so hard, they melted the radiator hose to the turbo intake pipe. And no mechanic has seen that. That I had to look at the truck. I mean, it's, it, it, it's had. Several issues. So Jill and I are working with the, we get the claim all put together, the insurance companies, hopefully the insurance company stands behind. The, the truck, it um. It, it was rode pretty hard. You can't, you can't ride a diesel engine hard like that and expect it to perform. You just, they're, they're not a race car.
Where was it taken and where did they find it?
They took it from Tacoma, it went Lakewood, Spanaway. Um we, we tracked every, every, every road that it went on, we went on, including Dr. Rethan. We backtracked it through GPS, working with Justin and um they literally burned the tires off the back of the truck. I mean, their, the back wheels are covered in melted rubber and what happens when you run a diesel truck like that? The foot was in it all the time. The best way to explain is like when you see a tr- a big truck roll with black smoke, that's all raw diesel fuel. That's not fuel that's being burned. That's, that's accelerating too hard for what the engine could handle. Well, what they did is they drove it that way the entire time. So all that diesel fuel that went in those engine cylinders. Eventually washed the cylinder walls clean and went into the oil pan. When I had it checked out at the auto shop, they said, oh, the oil's overflowing. I said, probably not oil, it's probably diesel fuel. And because they just pumped all that fuel straight into the oil pan. Now when the truck starts up, it sits there not five or six times before it picks up prime because it's being lubricated by diesel fuel versus oil. It, it's just, they just hammered on it. The rear main cells leaking, the oil pans leaking, the head gasket's leaking, the front seals leaking. Had to melt the radiator hose to the turbo intake, aluminum turbo intake pipe. Pretty, pretty hard to do. Pretty hard to do.
What year was it?
That truck's a two thousand and four. It only has ninety-eight thousand miles on it.
But it was a F.
F three fifty.
Free wheelie.
Yeah, F three fifty-four door diesel, yeah. And it's. It's, uh, we, we drove it down the road and then the mechanics tested it out and it's like uh sixty percent power loss is what it's at. I mean, it's just. You know, you can go to fix all that, but fix all that would total the truck, so.
Six point O or six four?
And we have to, if the truck. When we use the truck, we use it with kids in it as well, not just equipment, so we have to make sure it's in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't want it, I would not want to put kids in it and the stock trailer on back and send them over to Allen's where it shows lamps. It just.
Not in its current condition.
Would be a, would be a good.
We get our money back and we take the GPS off of it, save money.
We definitely keep our GPS. Oh yeah, we can, yeah, we can reassign that to another vehicle. Yeah, that was.
On an old truck, it's got a seven-three in it.
Yeah, that's bolt group.
That's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'll keep an eye out, yeah. Seven, from ninety-nine to two thousand and three. They're a million mile motors.
Yeah.
And you won't screw them up like you can the six over the six fours. I own a nineteen ninety-nine, you know, F two fifty, so. Yeah, I'm fairly. Where with the. Hard to, you know, it's like, I don't think they drove it like they, like they just stole it.
They, well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's horrible.
Power steering doesn't work. When I picked it up from the theft um from the department. The power steering didn't work and power brakes didn't work. And partly on the way home, power steering started working and power brakes started working.
They got it hot.
And, and then when we, the mechanic drove it, it's a little power steering feels fine. So okay, take it out and drive it, take it out and drove it. By the time we got back, no more power steering. So it's, they just hammered it, it just.
Probably, probably in the, probably in the cooler.
And it's, it's full of fluid, everything, all the fluids, just they just, they just. It just got so hot, you know?
Gotta flush everything out if you're trying to be safe though.
So we're working on that, um. Working with the insurance company to see. We have purchased and will continue to purchase anything the kids need. Uh equi- equipment wise. Uh they had a lot of things back at school that they could start to use and um. And they have done that, but they're, the drone, for instance. Um they did have to have, we didn't have extra drone equipment. Because it's such a new. Um event. So I think actually one of the companies really helped us with that and sent us new products for the, for the drone. But um, yeah, we, we will, I mean, they're, remember, we didn't just lose our first place. Uh teams' equipment. We learned, even though the first place team is the only one that goes to nationals. We lost the first, second and third place. All the kids who went, there were five. Tubs of equipment that we lost. And they were full.
Including the equipment to run the competition, because Paul runs the state competition for search and rescue. So all the equipment. That the other schools use. Actual contest.
And none of that stuff been recovered yet?
No.
No, we don't ever expect.
Probably, probably, no, I, I, I wouldn't expect it to, but. You know, you never know, um.
Yep. The kids are spending, as Ashton said, hours working to, uh they've just got the best attitude.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it this time that they're gonna take and. Scan and save all that stuff to some.
Well, it's, you know, they did have a lot of things, like some of the um. The pictures uh that they've created of their um. Of the. Robotics and things that they're making, they, they were on the computer, just the notes that they made when they. Went back and fixed something and changed it and tightened a screw here or altered the. The angle of this piece. That was all done by hand, and so that's what they're missing. And their, their uh notebook. Was, it's over fifty percent of the total score. And I guess it was one of the best notebook, notebooks they've ever seen for the robotics kids. It was absolutely outstanding work, so. I have faith that they're gonna be able to re. Redo it. It probably won't be as in-depth and I know that um. Uh Paul is working to see if he can use any of the evidence that they got at the state level. To present when they go to nationals, because it was judged and they do have that information.
Should be national folks. Sympathetic and open to them coming with new equipment and new stuff.
That's fine, yeah. The kids, the kids don't have to. Well, I should say, I don't believe the kids have to use, they can, they've qualified, they can do anything they want. Yep.
Wow.
Um so we did have a lot of people looking to help and to support the kids. Um as we talked, we just took donations for the students. To pay for the students to go to nationals. Um the equipment was all paid for by the district and whatever we get back from insurance, insurance claims. As of this afternoon, um fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty, sixty dollars.
Wow.
Was donated, yep.
Wow.
We have taken the, the donation button down. Uh we took it down yesterday, Monday?
This morning, early this.
Early this morning. Um we took it down. We believe it's gonna cost about twelve thousand to send to the kids. Um so there'll be a little extra and that will stay in the robotics um ASB account. It will be used for future national trips to nationals when they head off again. But a lot of support from. Um just our community and then people across the country. There's a few coming from Florida and we, you know, very thankful, but it's like Florida, wow, really? So.
What are they doing?
That donations.
All money.
Yeah.
They're sending money.
Yeah, all over the place, so. Um we also had quite a few companies that we work closely with who have. Given donations as well, um and just wanted to help. There was somebody today that came in with. Three hundred dollars for the kids. Who was it? I forget, anyway.
I was sad.
Yeah, lots of, lots of support, which was really nice. Um so to do this, Justin came up with a great idea and said, you know, we really need to not only, oh, it was Shauna, okay. We gotta give Shauna all the credit deserved because it was a brilliant idea. Um but instead of just doing thank you notes, which we'll, we'll be sending thank you notes to. Especially our big donors, the kids have put together a video to say thank you.
Get this to do what I want it to do.
Which one of those wanted to be the engineer?
The guy on the left.
Yeah, that's that one there?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is uh Mr. Coos and this is my gang here that's going to nationals. This is Mason, Daniel, which we going for robotic. And this is Zach and Kaden, which are going for drones. This is what we've accomplished in our uh week here. We've been working super hard, put in extra hours. We've got a robot built. Already, but we still got a ton of work to do. We got our drone put together and we're still working on that and getting ready for the competition. And just wanna say, at least from the advisor standpoint, we are. Overjoyed at the response from the community. It was wonderful. It was extremely touching, uh the response that we got. Would you guys like to say anything?
Yeah, um. Just wanna say thank you for all of you guys who have contributed. It. Has fully paid for our trip to Georgia Plus some. Just is amazing that. Throughout the US, everyone has decided to contribute and donate. We wanna thank you. Uh with everybody's donations, it's increased drilling our drones and our robots. Um and it's put time and effort in all of us.
The fact that we found contributions, not just from our local communities, but from all around the country, has insanely motivated us to keep working as hard as we can. To finish our, reach our goals. And it just means so much to us and the really words can't put how much we're thankful of this.
Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything you've done.
So that'll be posted, yeah, that's. So that'll be posted on Facebook and then we'll share it. As we can with people who have donated. We do have emails for. From everybody who's donated, so we might even just send it off via email so that they can receive a copy of it.
I don't think I ever saw the donation thing go out, because you know, I'm always. Looking.
Oh.
I don't know if I ever saw that.
Yeah, I did go, it was on Facebook, um and it was on our website. Um, yeah.
Look at the website all the time. I see it, well, I see it stuff when it comes out on Facebook. You know? I'm looking there, specifically looking there to see what's.
Yeah.
What's coming out.
It has been, it was only up, I mean, because we didn't wanna just. We needed, we said we needed twelve thousand dollars, so we didn't wanna keep collecting it beyond.
Yeah.
And get, you know, that was not our intention, so um. It was up from. But there, Friday morning, Friday morning.
Through. The webpage was, and then I put the post out, I wanna say Friday evening, I think it went out at seven PM. We took the links down on the Facebook post yesterday and the websites all went down today.
It's a little over a week. Almost a week.
Less than a week, yeah.
Then, like, Leslie did her thing too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's all added into this.
Yep, that would all add it in and, yep. Yeah, it's.
Almost fifteen hundred dollars and I think we rounded up sixteen hundred uh. Forty-eight hours.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so there was people like Leslie that were just kind of asking friends and family around the community. Um we had the link on the website. We also had a lot of people just coming in and saying. You know, there's fifty dollars for the kids. The high school had people coming in and supporting them, so.
Cool.
Yeah, it was very cool. And it, it's really cool because these kids don't have time to think about. Raising funds. We, we need to make sure that they can focus on the work that they have to do. And they got the right attitude.
Oh, yeah, I just can't figure out how much, how they're gonna have so much time. Oh, yeah, I just can't figure out how much, how they're gonna have so much time. They just stay in every night after school, kind of thing.
Lunch hours.
I, I, two, two of them run track.
Yeah.
And so it's after class.
Wow.
So, and they have changed the process, they, um, they've already started typing up all of their narrative.
Yeah.
Um, they have to handwrite in their notebook, but they're typing their narrative this time, um, just in case. My guess is that, that notebook will probably stay in a backpack, not in the box anymore, and it'll wanna be close to the person.
Yeah.
And just say from my experience from this whole thing, it is absolutely humbling, the outreach and the community. You know, the, the communities come to support our team, and it's amazing, they took first place, oh, we lost everything. The highs and the lows, and it's gonna, okay, we've been given lemons, let's make lemonade, we can sell it for a buck. And, and the communities come, come together and, and nationally too, and I didn't know we were getting donations from Florida.
Yeah.
That's amazing, it's like.
All over the place.
Uh, and, uh, you know, most important part is you let these kids keep working on the project, so they'll be ready. Uh, yeah, it's like June nineteenth, you know, it's gonna come quick, and, uh, just wanna say thank you to anyone that's watching this or will watch this in the future. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Agreed, thank you very much. Uh, next up, I just wanted to recognize, uh, RPS and all of our bus drivers. Um, they spend some time, um, celebrating the bus drivers in a lot of different ways, but this was just last week that they went out and gave each bus driver a little goody bag and, and said, you know, send us your specials, thank you to them. Uh, just a few things about it, we have thirty-three bus drivers, thirty-three routes. We have, our most senior bus driver has been driving for thirty-seven years, and that's Gail Anderson, or Alan. And then our newest driver came on board September second of just this past fall, and that's Orin, uh, Robinetter.
Orion, yeah.
Yeah, Orion, there we go, Orion and Robinetter. And, um, so it was very fun to watch them being, uh, celebrated. Next. So this is a little bit, um, about the timber sales, and I really wish Jill was here to help, because she, um, has, well, both Jill and I learned a lot. We, we met with DNR, two representatives from, uh, Department of Natural Resources just this past week, and it was about timber sales and, um, what's happened to our timber sales, so. Um, they were great, they provided lots of information. I guess one of the things I'm gonna ask you at the end, after I tell you a little bit about what I learned, is if, to see if you would like to have them come in and talk to us for fifteen, twenty minutes to learn more about this. But, um, the timber sale areas are over there on the right. If you look at that map, the bottom, uh, the, the bottom left-hand part, yes, right in there, that's the part that is in our school district. And we get timber when they, um, harvest timber that's in our school district. So Capital Forest has areas that's in our school district, and that's where, um, our timber funds come from. The, uh, gold or the, uh, rust color? That is, let's see if I can see this and make sure I'm telling you the right way, the, the rust and the black is what we wanna look at. And the, um, the rust is what they're calling legacy forests. And those are forests that are eighty, they're, they're eight years old. Um, and now there is a group that is advocating that we should not be, um, harvesting forests that are eighty years old. We should only harvest forests that are younger than that. Um, the Department of Natural Resources and all of the forest area that they harvest had, you know, looked at science and they've, um, statistically determined when they should be cutting down what, and how do they replant and the whole bit. Um, they have old growth forests that are being maintained, those old growth forests are a hundred and twenty-five years or older. But with the reduction of the, um, the legacy forests would actually lose a million dollars in funds, timber funds that would have come to us. We have not received timber funds for three years, and so that was one of the things we were wondering, why haven't we received any timber funds? Um, and they, the number one reason is because they just hadn't harvested any in our area. But now we're learning that, if you look down in that area, it's called Juno, the bottom right there. There's a little bit of black, which is planned timber sales, and if it's black and not rust, then that will be, um, timber that will be harvested that we will receive funds for, but if it's rust, we might not be, they might not be harvesting it, which would then mean the reduction of the million dollars that we would have seen. Um, the Department of Natural Resources Board of Directors is hearing about the, the group that's promoting the, um, legacy forests, they're hearing from them, they're listening to them now. And the department or the, the board will be making a decision as to how they're gonna. So if you wanted me to have a voice one way or another, um, with the Department of Natural Resources Board, I can certainly do that. We could have them come in and we could listen to them, or could, or as a board, we could say we want them to go ahead and we agree with the legacy forest. We want there to be old growth, and we don't think we should, but I think before we say that, or before we say yes, it probably, if we wanna start to chime in, we probably should have them come in, so they can completely talk to you about, um, what I know just a little bit about.
And this is all capital forest land, correct?
Uh, no, it's, I don't think it's all capital, but I'm not sure, the.
State forest. It has to be a land, land estate, doesn't have to be recycled within capital forest, it has to be state forest land that resides with our school district. In our district, I've been looking at this list and I see Olympia on here, we're.
Yep.
It's like, they're, they're getting two point eight.
They would, they would, from the legacy forests, if the legacy forests are not harvested, they would be impacted by two point eight million dollars.
These are impacts.
Yes.
Okay. And what's the name of the group that is protesting the sale?
I don't have the name of it right here.
You mean, and?
So the question is, would you like to hear more?
Absolutely.
Sure. Yeah, because in days, today where every, you have to pinch every penny?
Yeah. It'd also be interesting to know where they are in the process, like, it's just been going on for four years, nor am I making a decision, or they're just starting this, and.
So that, it's been two years that they've been hearing the concern and they are, the board is now at a place where they're starting to get to the place where they're gonna start making a decision, but that's a really good question, and they will be on the podcast about that.
Yeah.
I know the board is meeting, their next board meeting is in May, and they're meeting out at Capital Forest to actually walk part of this area to look at. But I will schedule a time for them to, to come and talk with us.
Yeah. I mean, the conservationists that are wanting to protect these forests, but these forests were set up for funding for schools and there needs to be a route for the schools to receive funding from the state, and this is a state thing with DNR. It's a state forest.
Yeah, it's state forest and it was set up as a, a means to harvest. The funds, a good significant amount of funds do come to schools, yep. Okay, I will arrange for them to come in.
Wonderful, thank you.
Uh-huh. Um, then just some updates, first of all, the principal hiring process, continuing to work on that. Probably not a surprise, but there are not a lot of people who want to be a high school principal. Uh, Justin, I know, he's talking to him.
Step up.
Um, so, working on that, my hope is that next week we will be interviewing, um, but I'm still digging to see, continue to look for high-quality candidates, that we will be working on. More to come on that.
Uh, did the, uh, I don't remember her name, the vice principal?
Heather?
Yes.
She's not interested in being the principal, that she's.
She's still new as a, as a vice principal?
She, yeah, she's, what, say that again, sorry.
Is she still new?
She is, she is still new, she's, um, she's been actually been a principal, but not at the high school level. And she's really appreciating the opportunity to go learn about.
What better way to learn? Jump in a hot seat. There's no other weather, better way to learn.
I don't know, you said that.
On the job training.
Um, the kindergarten enrollment, we're continuing to work that and try and get the word out. Uh, we're actually sending postcards out to the families in our community who have four, five and six-year-olds. And, um, they're gonna get a postcard reminding them to register for kindergarten. We think we're still low there. We have ninety-three kids. I'm staffing them at a hundred and thirty kids, that's the lowest kindergarten class we've had in, you know, years and years, so I believe there's still another forty kids out there that haven't registered, and we just need to find them. So anytime you see any families with young kids, don't be afraid to say, are you gonna be five? Have you registered for kindergarten yet? Um, this has been something that Amy has seen since COVID. That the, prior to COVID, by about this time of year, there would be a hundred and thirty students registered, and then it would continue to grow. And since COVID, it's been a lot slower in the registration process. Um, long-range facilities task force, so putting together a list of names, I think I have a really good list of names, but wanna just remind you, if you have any ideas of people, please let me know, really looking at different people who are representing different parts of our community, so we have all the different stakeholders, twelve to fifteen people, and, um, not only, uh, different parts of our community, but different age groups, so we have a, a good span of ages working together, and um, oh, what was the other thing I was gonna say? Um, oh, nobody that works in the school, so everybody will be people who are in the community, and then we will have a, uh, school district leadership team that will work side by side to answer questions and make sure that the information that we have is there. Um, we will have Justin, myself, will be there to make sure that we can answer any questions that anybody might have, but we're gonna have some good conversations about what are, what does our community want in our facilities.
And, and prior people that work for the school district, they're long, you know, retired and.
Yep.
They can.
They could certainly do it. I've got a couple of names of people who have been, who have retired that, um, we think would be good on the committee, so if you have somebody, let me know.
Okay.
Haven't talked to them yet, so I'm not seeing any names, um, until we've or have talked to everybody. Um, audit, just wanna note that we are, the audit for our district is starting, you've probably had a invitation to the entry process of the audit. If you're interested in attending, let me know, you don't have to attend, um, but you certainly can if you want to. Um, the areas that they're auditing this year are special education, that, are the, our use of ESR funds, so did we use all of our COVID funding correctly, and then the financial statement presentation, which is basically the outline of our fund balance. And that's what they'll be looking at. And then I wanna remind or let you know that it's Administrative Assistance Day, so we're all appreciating Shauna, and I thought it was important. Yes, absolutely amazing, and we, I, I certainly couldn't be able to make it without her, but I'm not sure that the district would run without Shauna, so. And then, uh, last thing there is teachers slash employee, we is May eighth through twelfth, and it, that's officially Teacher Appreciation Week. But as a district, we celebrate the Employee Appreciation Week, May eighth through twelfth, so just so you're aware, um, that's gonna be going on, and I think that's the last slide. Oh, then there's reminders, High School Play, Austin shared that with you, uh, what would, what is it? Goldie, The Untold Story?
Yeah.
All right, that sounds interesting. Um, I think it's at seven o'clock?
Yes, I could've rung about that.
Friday and Saturday, yep. There's also multicultural night at, um, at the high school, not this Friday, but the next Friday, May fifth. And that's gonna be, there's gonna be food, there's gonna be some, uh, dancing, there's gonna be just a celebration of the different cultures that we have in our community, so that might be something you wanna consider going to. Then we have graduations on there, but we, we do have, I think Pam said, six Mondays left, so it's going fast.
April's gone.
Yes, April is gone.
It was like one big rain cloud the whole month. And the five months before that. It has been a while.
All right. Next.
I got two things real quick, uh, I just think I spoke with you or text with you one time about that field out here. And we own the field, correct?
Hmm.
Um, and so somebody from our department, uh, wants to try to help improve that, once the new, um, the additional.
Commissioner.
Commissioner comes online and try to get some additional funds and to help improve that area. We've only briefly talked about that, but that is, um, he wants to, uh, come and speak to us. And I just said.
Yep.
Contact.
Yep.
There, and then we would take that from there.
Yep, we'll work with them, see what we got, and then, yes, definitely.
Yeah.
And I'll keep you posted.
Cause I don't, I don't, I don't know the plan.
Yep.
It works for me, but I don't know the plan.
Okay.
So.
Send it my way.
So.
Commissioner?
Uh?
New commissioner with the party department, or?
No, uh, Thursday County Commissioner.
The county commissioner now.
Uh?
We get hold of the county commissioner now, there, we still have a commissioner that covers this area.
Well, yeah, well, one of the ones who is running.
Oh. Okay.
It's gonna be for our area.
For the new spot, is that what you're talking?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
District four, I believe, is the one that they're putting on.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Thomas, Sam, come talk to me, that would be great.
Yeah. He decided to skip town and not work tomorrow, so, you know.
All right.
And, uh, lockers?
Well, you and I can touch base on that afterwards.
Okay. Okay, that's all, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah. Is that everything from that report? All right, and now we are on to whole business.
This is the, uh, school board meeting schedule where we're going to change the May twenty-fourth meeting to May twenty-fifth due to the awards ceremony at the ESD that I need to go to. Does that still work for everybody?
It's for me.
Okay.
Make a motion? All right, so, uh, like to make, somebody like to make the motion to change our next board meeting from, uh, from May twenty-fourth to the twenty-fifth, correct?
Hmm.
So moved, oh.
And second?
I'll second it.
Right, well, everybody vote, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And next is new business. The twenty-three, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school board meeting schedule.
Is that gonna be here? It just, it just.
These are all here at this point.
Okay, okay, make sure I get that in mind.
Tip of the wazza come from, so it'll be in Bellevue this year.
Won't we have to discuss about going to that?
Yeah, we don't need to discuss that now.
Yeah, no, 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 that's okay, at that point, whenever, we have to discuss about that.
We're just approving it at this point, did it, in our next.
It does reflect having the Thursday meeting next.
What did you, okay.
So I just like to play them.
Which? Okay.
It's already put in, built into the kit for May twenty-third of twenty twenty-four.
So we don't, I don't have this schedule in progress, so I, we don't have a meeting between now and.
We have a bar, we have a study session the second, uh, Wednesday in May. Which would be the eighth, the eighth, I think.
That's a Monday.
This is, okay, nine, ten, then.
Next week, so you still have meetings in, in June, July and August.
If this is for next.
Next year's, this is, uh, this is our meeting schedule for next year, for twenty twenty-four.
This meeting schedule starts on September thirteenth, thirteenth of next fall.
Okay.
So we'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school board meeting schedule. I'll move it. Seconds?
Second.
Right, and, all right, I'll. Right, and all right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Right, it's approved. Next, we have curriculum K five math adoption. This is the, this is the math that we went through.
This, yeah, the update you got in March. Uh, this is the, it's gone through all the rest of the processes in the, in the district. It is now. Uh, before you for approval, it's been, been approved by our recommend, it's now recommended to you for approval by everybody, by all the other committees. So.
All right. Any questions or anything? Uh, at this point, uh, to make a motion to approve the curriculum K five math adoption? Second. Second. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Right, aye. Curriculum's approved.
Uh, Justin, that's not even getting a smile out of you. That was.
Hey.
Three years.
Yeah.
Three years.
Oh, I mean, where's the dump spot? That's great.
Right.
There's been other things I've been doing. It's been a long day, Michael. It's been a long day.
The next on our new business agenda is C, technology, teacher laptops.
So this is, this is part of the, part of the budget. It's, this, these are items that are budgeted in annually. Teacher laptops are on a, on a four-year cycle. Uh, as the lap, this uh round of laptops is for R P S teachers. So as we get back. R P S teacher laptops that are four years old, we take the best of the best and then we redistribute those back out to be used for another three to four years. The different, various other things. For instance, uh, last year when we rotated out. Um, uh, all of a sudden, we were in the need of two laptops for the Coos's uh robotics team right away. Uh, we had a couple on the shelf leftover from Asher's rotation that we were able to image get to him so that they could continue doing some work because they lost a couple laptops. Uh, in the, in the fest as well. So um, so we hang on, hang on to those and we're able to use with the parts and whatnot. We usually get another three to four years out of those. Uh, but for teachers, we're gonna make sure that they're working at the pace. We need them to work at, work at. We all know after about year four on a, on a computer, things just seem to. Slow down, uh regardless. And so uh, I've been working with uh, with, with uh, this, this vendor is, is a local vendor out of, out of Lakewood that we've been able to. Uh, work prices on with and uh, uh, nice. I worked, I worked him over pretty good and got it down about as far as I'm gonna get it down, so.
Justin, I appreciate all the efforts you've put into for saving our district money when it comes to technology and, and. They invite a lot of this, give me your best price. So. I don't know if I'd buy a car from you, but. I know everyone in the district really does.
You got an old Ford truck, I'd like to sell.
Well, great shape. You want to sell it up there on South to come away? All right, so uh, with that, uh, is, is there a motion to approve the technology for the teacher laptops?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have facilities, R P S mezzanine stairs.
Yeah, this is um, I applied for a grant from the E S D uh one-one-three workers compensation and we got the five thousand dollar grant. They, they do it every year for a school district. I applied for it and got the five thousand dollar grant. The uh cost for the stairs is eleven thousand five hundred and one dollars. These are the mezzanine stairs that are in the. Um, they're in what is the stage area, but we use it as a classroom. Um, Francine's in there and um. The stairs that are in there, it takes two men and a small boy to get him to come down. And these stairs will, they're, they're unsafe to, to the way that they fold accordion down. And uh, the replacement stairs will. Take care of that, make it so that's a one-man operation. The, where the stairs are, there, where the ramp goes up into the stage. If it was just being a stage, it'd be a different deal, but it's a classroom where we have kids and all that stuff, so.
Safeties.
This is the, yeah, we've got a lot of stairs that we could use to replace, but this is the priority.
So we got five thousand dollar donation. Wonderful. Appreciate you chasing down that grant for us, Ed. All right, all right. So uh, is there a motion to approve purchase of the R P S mezzanine stairs?
So moved. Can't stand silence.
All right.
I'm sorry.
The first and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Right, next on, last on our list, C T E new vehicle.
This is for purchase of a new vehicle that we have not yet found yet. So we're asking for the approval of up to thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars so that when we find an eight to nine passenger vehicle. To um, transport C T E students, purchase it.
Right.
So it's a, uh, we're looking for a van, is that?
We're looking for a van or, or a large S U V, something that will hold eight to nine students.
Okay.
Big van. Okay, well, and so this is just approving the, the procedure to continue to go up and. Accept it.
For us to look for it and know that we, we can spend up to thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be. Nice, you're ready. This replacing what we just got ruined or is it in addition to that?
This is in addition to.
We need to, we need to replace a blue C T V and that was bought used when I was still teaching, Mike. Eighty-eight years ago.
Yeah.
Makes you a hundred and eighty. That's right. And vans are, vans are very, very difficult to come by, and so we, we, if one comes available, we need to go to act.
Less than.
Yeah, so.
The companies themselves don't want to wait forty-five days for board approval and issuing a payment. They want, that can happen very quickly.
Yeah. Who's looking for it? And are you gonna find a van? I have not looked for a van.
I'm sorry.
For that price.
Ed, 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 myself and Kevin Wilson are on, on a hunt for a van, and there's all sorts of uh laws that apply to schools that don't apply to, say, churches. So we are very specific types of chassis.
So we, our parameters are.
Yes, narrow.
Narrow.
Yeah.
We're not like required to find some sort of electorate.
Elect, no, 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 no.
It has to be labeled as M P V.
We, we can't have anything that's one ton. One ton has a bus chassis.
We need to be under a one-ton?
Yes. Yes, actually has to be half-ton.
It's the apt.
Yeah, cause if it's, if it says bus chassis with painted yellow, lights on it, and you have to have certain things.
That class, yeah, we have a different bucket of money for that, that we already spent, so.
Yeah, that's good. This is coming out of C T E dollars and, and Perkins Grant, so this is not coming out of general, general funds.
Is thirty-nine nine enough?
We, we, we potentially have two in our sights.
Do we need to increase that number to like forty-five?
No.
You guys are fairly certain where you're at?
We, we need to be at that number.
Is that new or is that used?
That's gonna be used. We, we have to be at this number.
Cause I know that there's a lot of problems right now with.
We have to be at this number.
Okay. So it's all about, uh, we're gonna make a motion to approve the uh, the uh, prove the expenditure of up to thirty-nine thousand dollars to purchase a new vehicle for C T E.
Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred.
Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Pardon me. Uh, is, have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
And a second? Sir, a second? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Right, motion carries. All right, at this point in time, we are at public comment for items that were not on our agenda tonight. We have anybody? Nope, we don't have anyone here. Do we have anybody online, Justin?
If anyone, not at this time, if anyone on Zoom would like to speak to something not on the agenda, please put your name and email in chat and your topic, and then we will call on you.
Okay, we will wait, hello?
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds. I just, I, is it, I'm dumbfounded by the, by the, by the price of this and then the parameters of.
Yeah, they make you jump through tons of hurdles. It didn't, the way the law used to state, the WAC was ten, ten passengers or less. Now they're dabbling in the twelve-passenger le, or less, but State Patrol doesn't necessarily acknowledge that. So when we have our vehicles inspected every year, we can buy, we gotta be careful because we could buy a twelve-passenger. And, or a ten-passenger that has ten seats, but it's not rated M P V and the State Patrol won't accept it for us to haul students. And so, yeah, it's the dance.
Interesting.
State Patrol and D O T don't necessarily talk together, you know.
Yeah.
Everyone has signed up.
No one has signed up. All right, so no one has signed up for public comment at this point in time. Uh, we adjourn the meeting.